Refresh the screen.
But it's not good enough to do anything but go after the next game.
What is?
The Suns. They have, I think they played a home game last night and they have one more and that's it for the season.
Well, call our meeting to order. First item is invocation by Pastor Joe Burna, Bethel Baptist Church. He will also lead us in the pledge.
Please bow with me as we pause for prayer. Our Heavenly Father, as we gather in this place this evening, we are mindful that you are with us. So we thank you for your presence here. We thank you for your presence in our lives day by day. So Our Father, we pray that you would grant wisdom and the ability to make correct decisions to the council and all that they deliberate upon tonight. We pray, Our Father, that you will guide them, guard them, continue to bless our city with all that you have that is good for us and for the people. We just thank you, Our Father, for who you are, for the things that you do, and we give you praise that everything that we do would be done in a manner that brings honor and glory to you and that is done in a manner that is pleasing in your sight. For this is our prayer, in Jesus' name and everybody said.
Amen.
Would you join me as we pledge to the flag? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, next item is scheduled announcements and presentations, Chamber of Commerce. Oh, roll call, I'm sorry, we got a roll call. Diane.
Mayor Skug.
President.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman. Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
Councilmember Nye.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we go on to the scheduled announcements, Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Every month, you guys are kind enough to let us bring one of our members up here and introduce themselves, so I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth Kenny with the Total Package. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and ladies and gentlemen. The Total Package has all your handyman needs wrapped up. This company started in 2008 in La Quinte, California. We brought this business with us when we relocated to Prescott Valley last November. We will continue to give our clients our prompt, honest, dependable, fair-priced, and work-guaranteed services. In addition, we offer free consultations and estimates. If we cannot provide a requested service, we will refer you to a reputable alternative. You can visit our website to see more testimonials and photos. Please give us a try, you will not be disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Appreciate that.
I just wanted to take a quick second to talk about the Prescott Valley Days event that is coming up on Thursday, April 21st through Sunday, April 24th. We're going to have a lot of fun things at this, so try to get out there and make it. It's in the entertainment district. On Thursday, the carnival will be opening at 5:00 PM. Friday, we're going to have quilt shows, vendors, the carnival again, of course, live remotes, the Beer Garden, disco dance party, and the Matchstick Rush Fire Show Saturday. Carnival again. We're also having the parade at 10:00 AM. It's "Good Times in Prescott Valley" is the theme. Really thank the Lions Club for stepping up and doing that for us. It's so much fun, and we have roughly 65 parade floats this year. That's, I believe, three times the amount of last year, which is fantastic, so we're looking really forward to that one as well. Quilt show as well, some family entertainment, and then on Sunday is the Salute to Heroes, and there's going to be a lot of fun. Monster Truck Show, BMX, just a lot of fun. Tickets there are going to be $25, but you can also purchase them beforehand for $18 at the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce. We're located 7120 Paveway, and you can give us a call at (928) 772-8857. And I'm going to leave these on the table by the entrance for anybody who wants to pick one up and come check it out. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Now, the Build Fest by Habitat, I understand, has been canceled, so we'll have to table that one for tonight. We move on to Proclamations. We've got several, Power Talk 21. We'll start with that one.
Nice.
Someone here to receive that one? There we go, come on up. Diane, you want to read the pro?
Yes, Mayor. Power Talk 21 Day, April 21st, 2016. Whereas the town of Prescott Valley recognizes the importance of parents talking with their teens about alcohol in order to reduce the risks and the dangers posed to teens and communities, and whereas high school students who use alcohol or other substances are five times more likely to drop out of school or believe good grades are not important, and 27% of middle school students try alcohol before graduating from eighth grade, significantly increasing the risk that they will develop alcohol problems later in their life. And whereas teen alcohol use kills 4,700 people each year, more than all other illegal drugs combined, and whereas the majority of kids say their parents are their primary influence when it comes to decisions about drinking alcohol, and whereas Power Talk 21 Day, started by Mothers Against Drunk Driving in 2011, is established on April 21st, 2016, to encourage parents and caregivers to embrace their important role in influencing America's youth and their decisions about drinking alcohol. And whereas to equip parents to talk with their teens about alcohol, MAD Arizona on April 21st will host Power of Parents workshops to give parents the tools to effectively talk to their children about alcohol to protect them. And whereas I urge all citizens to join in the local and national efforts to raise awareness of the importance of parents and children talking together about alcohol to reduce the risks and the dangers posed to children and communities. And now therefore I, Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim Thursday, April the 21st, 2016, as Power Talk 21 Day in the town of Prescott Valley, and urge all citizens to join in these local and national efforts.
Thank you, Diane. Any comments, Vice Mayor? Okay, I don't know who's going to, if anybody's up here to take it. This lady said she's for the next one, so we'll go on to the next one. Tai Chi and...
Qigong.
...
Qi Gong.
... Qi Gong Day. You want to come up and...
Yeah, we're ready. Find out for sure.
Tai Chi and Qi Gong Day, April 30th, 2016. Whereas World Tai Chi and Qi Chong Day is celebrated in 80 nations annually, and whereas it is also an ancient Chinese art that provides health benefits to people of all ages, including stress reduction, improved focus, coordination, flexibility and balance, and brings people together in harmony with the environment. And whereas World Tai Chi and Qi Gong Day is always celebrated around the world on the last Saturday of April each year, and now therefore I, Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2016, as Tai Chi and Qi Gong Day in Prescott Valley, Arizona, and encourage our citizens to help create a wave of healing energy by joining in this worldwide event.
Thank you, Diane. Vice Mayor?
For comment, thank you so much, Mayor. And we're hoping this is a successful event. I've held the event and taught Tai Chi and Qi Gong for several years. We've had this in Tucson and Green Valley, and I hope Prescott Valley community comes out and supports it as well. Oh, I'm sorry, it's right here in the amphitheater area, and it's on April 30th, 10 o'clock in the morning. Everyone can come, everyone can join in, and there'll be several instructors. We'll have Severn, we'll have sword, Qi Gong, and different modalities.
Are you going to advertise it?
Pardon? We are going to advertise it. So everything is free, it's for the community, so they have an awareness of Tai Chi and Qi Gong, and it's, you know, pretty much evidence-based anymore in the West. They've known it in the East for thousands of years, but they're learning here that it's being used for various things: cardiac rehab, stroke rehab, numerous things.
Sounds like a great event. I hope everybody comes out. Now, this is Patty Doherty. So if you have any questions, ask Patty. Thank you so much, Patty. We'll take our next one, which is Volunteer Appreciation and Recognition, PBPD Volunteer of the Year, Dave Dembski. I believe I see several volunteers. You are going to all come up? You want to read that one, Diane?
National Volunteer Week, April the 10th through 16th, 2016. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip and mobilize people to take action that changes the world, and whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference, and whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service, and whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient, and whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of the nation's social problems, and whereas our country's volunteer force of more than 63 million is a great treasure, and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation, now therefore I, Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim April the 10th through the 16th, 2016, as National Volunteer Week, and urge my fellow citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. By volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we can come together to make a difference.
Now, let's get David Dembski up here. Where's David? Oh, you want to arrest too? Recognize the volunteers first.
Just want to say how much we appreciate all of our volunteers in the town of Prescott Valley. More than 240 people give of their time and their skills to help out in their community to give back, and we really appreciate that. So I'd like to have any of our volunteers that are here today, if you would stand, please, if you volunteer in any area of the town. We so much appreciate the time and the skills and the hours that you give in every area of the town, and it makes, I can't tell you what a huge difference you make to help this community be a better place to live. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Heidi. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. In keeping with that theme, we wanted to honor our police department's Volunteer of the Year. He was unable to attend our awards banquet in March, so we wanted to present him with his award here tonight. The Volunteer of the Year for 2015 for the police department is Dave Dembski. Dave has been a volunteer with the Prescott Valley Police Department since 2009, where he was assigned to the Traffic and Patrol Divisions. During 2015, Dave volunteered 747 hours of his time. He worked closely with the Field Services Division, assisting officers with traffic control, and attending patrol briefings to stay informed of current issues. And he would also assist with driver training at the track and perform the duties required for the house watch program. Dave is also our Mobile Command Post Driver, which is something that not just anyone can do. If you've ever seen it, it's pretty long and pretty big. Along with this responsibility, Dave assists with the maintenance and upkeep of the Mobile Command Post as well. Dave is one of our main contacts for the evidence run, which is where we have to take evidence up to Flagstaff, and we do this for two months out of the year. It's on a rotational basis. Dave does this for us, and it requires an entire day trip up to Flagstaff and back. Dave has trained several other VIPs to assist with the volunteer program, as well as various other duties in the department. And due to Dave's background as a mechanic, he has been able to save the department a lot of money by taking on repairs of the IP vehicles as he sees necessary. Dave Dembski is a shining example of what it means to be a police volunteer, and Dave has an exceptional demeanor and commitment to his job as a volunteer. His dedication to the department has not wavered in the seven years that he has volunteered with us. Thank you, Dave, for your time, your commitment and your positive energy, and you're truly deserving of this award. Thank you.
And Dave, you get your 20 minutes?
20? Maybe 20 seconds. I must say, it's an honor and a privilege to work with all the staff and the officers. After 70 years old, you don't think you're going to do too much around here, but there's always a place for us. All you have to have is a little gray hair and some time. Some gray hair and some time, which I see a lot of gray hair around here, so we just have to concentrate on the time. I wish you all a safe summer. Thank you.
Dave, you don't have to be 70 to volunteer. 70, 60. Thanks so much, Dave. Appreciate that.
I did want to kind of echo what Heidi said. From where I come from, the concept of volunteers helping out even in the city government is really kind of foreign to me, and it's something that I got to experience when I got here. And I can't tell you the work that they do for us. As I said at the banquet last year, they donated over 6,700 hours to the police department alone to help us get things done, and we couldn't get things done without the volunteers. We're very grateful. Thank you to all of you.
$6,700 is equivalent to more than three years of full-time employment. That's great. Thank you, Chief. Okay, next one is Library Week. Diane?
National Library Week, April the 10th through 16th, 2016. Whereas libraries are not just about what we have for people, but what we do for and with people. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses and schools, and whereas libraries are evolving in order to serve their communities and to continue to fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. And whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative STEAM programming, maker spaces, job-seeking resources and the power of reading, and whereas libraries and librarians are looking beyond their traditional roles and providing more opportunities for community engagement and deliver new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. And whereas libraries support democracy and affects social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, now therefore I, Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, do hereby declare April 10th through the 16th, 2016, as National Library Week, and encourage all residents to visit the library this week to explore what's new at the library and engage with your librarian. Because of you, libraries and librarians transform.
Thank you, Diane. I shouldn't do it, but I was kidding Ted Johnson. He says, "You give a whole week to library and only one day to mothers." You want to make a comment?
About that comment? I'll pass. Thank you for acknowledging the National Library Week, and I just also want to acknowledge about the volunteers. As you know, the library, for all the years that I've been here, we truly, truly could not provide what we do if it wasn't for the volunteers. We have several right here who just got out of the hospital, and he's already here, so... But anyway, thank you for that and for this proclamation. Anybody else?
Larry?
I just have to sacrifice my time out of the hospital for Stuart and the staff. They're just fantastic people to work with, really. So volunteering in the library is pretty easy, and you can ask my wife, she'll tell you that too.
More people should volunteer in the library and many other places, whatever. There's something for everyone out there. But the one thing I want to say about the library staff, they are the friendliest people, and they will go out of their way to help anybody find what they're looking for.
We like books. The library is great for moms to learn how to do everything, from take care of their children to take care of their husbands.
I will just say that, wow, that's a lot. The libraries are the great equalizer in the community, and we do offer so much for those who go without. So we have digital media labs, programming, job resources, so we really help out our community, and I'm glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Rick?
We're very proud of our library here in Prescott Valley, and obviously, we offer more than just books, but, you know, we hope everyone will take advantage of our library and come and see it, because we are very proud. Thank you.
I think Stuart was librarian. When I library, library was what, 3,000 square feet? Then it went up to 13,000 square feet. Today it's what, 40,000 square feet? And now today, it's about 100,000 volumes and a pretty large electronic component. And something unique, we have a coffee shop here, and our instruction usually is, "Do not take beverages or food in the library." We do it here, right? So it's a very friendly environment. Any other comments? Heidi, anything else you'd add? Thank you so much. Good job. Oh, you're going to take a picture. Comments? Anyone care to make comment?
I have a comment, Mayor. Well, first of all, just watching all of this tonight with the volunteers and our library and everything, you know, we have the best, the best community, and it's, and the reason it is the best community is because the people in it care so much and put so much of themselves in it, and that's what builds a community, builds our cities, our towns, our states and our country. And to go along with that, I am just so proud to say that our mayor was elected Man of the Year last night at the Prescott Association Area Leadership banquet, and I'm just so proud of him. He is a great leader, and we are blessed to have him. So thank you, Mayor.
I am blessed to work with a super council and an outstanding staff. And there's, we can say what you want about leadership, but guess who does all the work? Our staff and the council. So thank you, Mary, for your comments. Any other comments, anyone? Okay, if there's no other comments, we'll move on to matters listed on the Consent Agenda. These are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired on a specific item, it'll be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. This includes the approval of the March 10th and March 24th executive sessions and March 24th council meeting minutes. B is authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1952, calling for primary election Tuesday, August 30th, 2016, and general election November 8th, 2016, if necessary, for the purpose of electing four council members, adopting the Proposition 435 Home Rule Option, and considering any additional propositions qualified for the ballot as may be necessary, and holding the elections as of, after voting, century elections. And C is authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1959, authorizing the submission of applications for Fire Department of Homeland Security, or for Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, assistance for the firefighters grant program, fire prevention and safety grant funds. D is approving the purchase of an upgrade for Click to Government online web payment portal from Sun Guard Utility Solutions and Services. E is approving accounts payable. And F is approving the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1962, authorizing the town and the YBB, as its Business, Better Business Bureau, to apply for funding for the Eli River Indian Community. These are all fairly standard items that we go through every year. One difference, of course, is the election will be in an even-numbered year. It used to be in an odd-numbered year. Anyone want to discuss this item separately, or do you want to approve it as a whole?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Steve?
Motion to approve all items listed on the consent agenda by electronic vote.
I'll second the motion.
We have the motion and a second. Will you set the vote, Diane? Mine didn't pop up, Diane. Mary just has a picture on hers.
Okay. May I suggest you all log off and log back on again? Make sure that your Wi-Fi is set for the library, or not the library, but town hall. Does anybody need some personal assistance?
Mary's just not working, huh?
It's got, it's got this, it's got a mind of its own, is what it's got.
You know, sometimes computers just pick a wrong time to update themselves. We'll proceed with those of you who can vote online, and those who cannot will take a voice vote. I see everybody has got back online, with the exception of Councilmember Mallory. How do you wish to vote? Yes, thank you.
And that passes. Okay, we're going to take one comment regarding the agenda, and it's Laura Lee.
I just wanted to recognize Kathleen Murphy, who worked so hard for so many years for Big Brothers and Big Sisters. And you'll notice our last item on our Consent Agenda has to do with a grant, and I bet you have something you'd like to say. Come on up to the microphone, Kathleen.
First of all, just want to say thank you. It means a lot to a lot of children in our community, and since it's Volunteer Week, I'd like to thank the 500-plus volunteers who volunteer as Big Brothers and Big Sisters across Yabapai County, over 200 here in Prescott Valley. Valley. And I'd like to introduce you to my little sister, Stephanie. And we've been matched for about a year. And she was going to give a speech, but she forgot her notes. Thank you all. We really appreciate your support, and it means a lot to many of the children in your community.
Stephanie, 20 minutes. Well, thank you. And Stephanie, that was nice to see you. Thank you, Kathleen. Okay, we'll move on then to public hearing, number 9A, alternative expenditure limitation home rule option. Out of hearing is open.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, council members, since, you know, on the RFCA, you know, Larry is the first name, so I was wondering if the new and improved, Larry Tarkowski would like to make any comments tonight regarding the home rule. Much improved.
Her loss is about the same, but, you know, state statute prohibits us from advocating for or against anything that's on the ballot. We have to be careful what we say, but home rule has been before the citizens of Prescott Valley. Every four years, they've proved that every time, essentially it boils down to allowing a local governing board to set your own budget versus using a state formula. We're actually having to do this a year early because of the consolidated election law changes. So normally, this would have come before us next year, but because of those changes, we're having to go through the election this year.
Do you have any questions? Basically, he's answered. Taking care of everything for me.
For the sake of the public, could you explain?
Sure, I'll just go through it real quickly. Like Ryan said, normally, it's a four-year process. Typically, I would be here probably six months from now, because typically, we'd have it in the spring of every year with part of our primaries. But because of everything has been moved to the general election, it'll be part of the general election this fall. So the home rule, just from our... Just some background information on the home rule. Like Ryan said, basically, it pertains to budgeting. That's all it involves around is budgeting. So there's two ways that we can prepare a budget in the state, in the cities of Arizona. One is through a state formula, which I'll go through here in a second, or an alternative method, which is the home rule, which is what we're kind of talking about tonight. So as you can see, there's 57 cities and towns in Arizona that utilize the home rule, basically, you know, over a majority. It has to be approved by the voters. So that's why it'll be part of the general election this year, and every four years going forward, it'll be part of the general election. As you can see, it's good for four years if it's approved. Now, if it's not approved, which we hope it does not happen, but if it's not approved, we have to follow the state formula for two years, and then it can go back on the ballot to be approved. You can see, it's been adopted since 1981, so we're on 30-some years, so it's been approved eight times, so hopefully, the ninth time will still occur this fall. Our first public hearing is tonight. In two weeks, you'll have your second public hearing on the home rule, and then immediately following the second public hearing, there's going to be an action item before council. Hopefully, council will approve the extension of the home rule, and then at that point, it'll go to the ballot. And then the election is in 2000, or on August 30th, 2016. So these next couple slides is the information that I have to send to the Honors General's office for review and then approval. This one right here is basically my calculations as to what I think we're going to spend over the next four years. You can see the four different categories. This information was obtained either through the budget process or our five-year capital improvement plan, or I do a five-year cash flow projections for council's retreat. So I've incorporated all that information, and then I broke it down into these four categories. General operation, basically, is whatever doesn't fall in the three categories below falls into this category. Salary benefits, any contracted services, utility services, everything would fall into this category. The CIP plan would include capital improvements and road construction, so we just kind of broke that down into two categories. And then debt service is our obligations on the bonds. You can see in 1819, there was kind of a little drop in our bond payments, our debt service payments. That's due to the fact that our, well, that's our, in 1718 is our last year that we're going to be making payment on our water, for the Shamrock Water. So that's why you see that drop there. This slide right here shows our revenue sources. So basically, one of the things in Arizona, budgeting, your revenues and your expenditures have to equal. One thing with revenues, we can always use fund balance if we need to, to balance our budget. So if you look here, total revenues on this page equals total expenditures on the previous page, because we're required to have a balanced budget. So federal, basically, is our grants that we're going to collect, or that I'm projecting that we're going to receive over the next four years. State is our state share revenues, and local, basically, is everything else. Sales tax, utility collections, everything will fall into that category. Okay, now, this is all we were, when we started calculating our, the state imposed calculation. So the first thing we have to do is calculate the population factor. So you can see our population for the next four years. This is from the Department of Economic Security, and then our population number from in 1978. So you divide it two, and you come up with this factor. This factor then... This factor then is carried on to this page. And you can see the base limit is back in 1979, 80, and that was our popular, our budget back then, our population factor, and then our inflation factor, excuse me, which is also comes from the Department of Economic Security. And then we have our improvement or our imposed expenditure limitation, and then the next one is exclusions. Exclusions are about, there's 15 items that fall into this category, and it's primarily debt service, interest income, things like that. So if you add the two together, that's what our state imposed calculation would be at this point. And then, here's the difference between a budget that would be adopted by council, which is in the middle, and then a state imposed. So you can see the difference is over $30 million in each of the years. So it's a huge difference between going on the state imposed calculation versus the home rule calculation. So with that, I'll answer any questions unless Ivan or Diane wants to add anything.
I'll add one item as well. Voting for or against home rule has nothing to do with tax rates. No, it's only on the budget side of things. So it will not decrease or increase any tax rates in Prescott Valley.
Any questions, Laura?
I don't have any questions, but I'm cranky about this. And I just hope our citizens follow the vote as they have right along, because how dare they at the state tell us how to handle our budget? They don't even have current data to validate it. So I hope our citizens are paying close attention and totally understand how sad this whole situation is. And if that's cranky, yeah, I'm cranky.
Any other questions? Mike?
Yeah, I just had a question, and we may have reviewed this before, but I was wondering, do we have any comparison with other municipalities in terms of who generally have the home rule and those that do not? And I thought it was a small number of...
Well, I mean, right now, the majority of the cities have home rule. And basically, it's this growing communities. Anyone that has either has a lot of potential for growth or cities that are growing quickly will always adopt the home rule, because they don't want to be limited into, built into any type of fixed budgeting process. So if something comes up, they want to be able to incorporate in their budget, they're going to go ahead and keep with the home rule. So majority of the cities will always adopt, follow the home rule option. There's a permanent, permanent option. There was a one-time exclusion or a one-time option. There's a couple others, but most of people, most of the cities and towns follow the home rule.
Yeah, I don't know, it was something we looked at before, but it seemed like maybe one municipality of the entire state was not taking advantage of it.
Well, I mean, there are, right now, I'm not sure if there's anybody, unless they're real small. Like, if you're a really small community, you may still be able to follow under the state imposed calculation. I think there are still a couple real small towns that do follow the state imposed, but almost all of the other cities will follow some other option.
And there are a few that we're aware of that did not approve home rule, and two years later, they reversed course because they saw the damage that it caused to their communities.
Any other questions, comments? Anyone from the public here to comment? Questions? Anything else? If there is no further comment, then I declare the public hearing closed. And next, we move on to B, consideration of appointing Jody Rooney to the Arts and Cultures Commission. This one is probably going to be a challenging one.
Sure, I'll take this. One position on the Arts and Culture Commission became open when Gary Snyder resigned effective September 15th, 2014. Gary was appointed to the Arts and Culture Commission on June 12th, 2014, to fill a partial term with an expiration date of June 30th, 2015. The vacancy was advertised, and an application was received from Jody Rooney. Councilmembers Mary Mallory, Laura Lee Nye, and I conducted the interview, and are recommending the appointment of Jody Rooney to fill the vacancy made by Gary Snyder's departure with the term renewal date of June 30th, 2018.
Come on up, Jody. I cannot tell you how excited I am, and I know that the other members coming of the Arts and Culture Commission coming up with Jody are. Number one, Jody is filling a position in the commission that, as long as I can remember, hasn't been filled, because Jody has, she has extensive business knowledge that she gets to bring to the arts and culture. And I enjoyed when we were interviewing Jody. We talked about the importance of art and economic development, and a lot of people don't understand that that's tied together, but Jody does. And we're so excited to have that. And Jody, I'd appreciate it if you'd just comment a little bit about that and why you were willing to serve on the Arts and Culture Commission.
Thank you, council member. Mayor, council members, I thank you for the opportunity and our staff today for me to be able to come before you and consider this recommendation. I see layers of art here in Prescott Valley just emerging, cultivating the culture that we have here. And as a businesswoman, I recognize the economic development impact that we can have positively in our community and our region. It is a known fact that as you interview for a job, as many of us have done over the course of our professional careers, we need a competitive edge. A community needs a competitive edge as well. And arts and culture can add that element that we can use here in Prescott Valley, our town. It also is, creates a foundation for a sense of place for our citizens. It also attracts new and visiting populations, which also brings in income for our community. I can tell you that sometimes people come to our area and they say, "This is beautiful. I didn't know." And they have businesses, and they relocate their businesses here. And arts and culture are a part of that. I can tell you, my husband and I, Casey Rooney, located here in the region. We came almost 10 years ago. We could have lived anywhere in the region. We chose Prescott Valley. We believe in this community. We love this community. And I would respectfully request that you would allow me to join other commission members here to be a part of what we're doing with the vision that we have for this community. Economic development is something we can continue to bring home. I see this as an untapped potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Suzanne or Nancy, do you want to go to make any comments?
I just wanted to welcome her to our group, and we've been a little shorthanded lately, and we have a lot of things to do, so this would be wonderful to have another member.
Good. Nancy?
I just want to comment that I've known Jody in other capacities, and I'm her number one fan to be a part of the Arts and Culture Commission. Thank you for appointing her.
Any other comments from the council? Marty?
Yeah, as long as we have you here. This week, I've had a few discussions with people in the community, and they've been asking about having some of the artwork that we have around the civic center, library, and police station be expanded to other parts of the community, rather than just that central area. So the request has been gone, has gone out to me, and I'm passing it along to you. So that'll task you with it. Thank you.
Brian Woody has some information on that regarding a couple of future art pieces that we have.
Welcome, Brian.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Councilman, to answer your question and give you a little insight, overall, the Art at the Center program is, has been established not only to populate here at this campus, but to address that simple fact in the outreach into the community. Currently, at George Anderson Park, we do have sculpture located there. It's actually in recognition of our former town manager there. That was one of his favorite parks in that location. Just recently, the commission has also received some information from one of our continuing artists at the center, and they are wanting to donate a couple of their pieces to the community. And in doing so, that will be part of that review. I'll be working with staff in regards to placement out at those parks. Currently, we're investigating Antelope Park and Viewpoint Park as destinations for those two pieces of work. As the, as the program continues into the future and utilizing the art at the center campus at this location, that will be our process, and especially as it relates to the donations that are given to this community. So currently, we have several thousands of dollars that have been invested, not only by artists within and outside of our community, for Prescott Valley and its citizens who are here. So I think it's outstanding that our citizens feel exactly the same way in the design of that program for Prescott Valley.
Well, thank you for that information. I will definitely pass it along.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Brian. Mary, you had a comment?
Oh, I just am excited. Jody is a fabulous, fabulous lady, and loves her community, and loves her state, and has such a heart to build it, to, there's no limit when it comes to her. Sky's the limit. So I think it's fabulous.
Brian, do you have a comment?
I'm not sure she's passed our background check yet, so you may just want to think about it before you vote, but I think she'll do a good job of it.
We're not going to ask you any more questions, Ryan. Anyone care to make a motion? It might die for lack of a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to appoint Jody Rooney to the Arts and Culture Commission.
And I'll second that.
The motion and a second. Would you set the vote? This is where the test comes, Jody.
Mine's not coming up again.
It wouldn't let me make a motion, but it is letting me vote.
Mine doesn't show the vote up here, ma'am.
Mine's working.
Mayor, is yours cooperating?
Vote yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor, that's unanimous for?
Unanimous?
Yes, unanimous.
You hear that, Jody? Congratulations. Thank you so much. We really appreciate that. Okay, we go on to C, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign resolution number 1960, accepting or adopting by reference amendments to Town Code Articles 905, 905A, and 905B to utility regulations for water and wastewater service. Now, this is going to be about a three-part process. Neil?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council.
You going to take one part first, or you going to do the whole thing at once?
Well, I'm going to, I've got a, you know, we spent 45 minutes on this last month.
We did, yes.
And so what I'm going to do is I have a brief summary presentation that I'll run through, about six slides, that'll encompass the next three items that you're going to be voting on in your packet. So I'll just... be voting on in your packet. So, I'll just speak once, and then you guys can do your your three different items or whatever, and hopefully it'll make it easier that way.
By the way, that screen is not working here. The screen in front of us?
You've already seen it. I'm assuming you've got it memorized.
We've seen it. Yeah, we memorized.
But many of our citizens have it.
I hate to say it, but I'm... I think I'm ready to propose that we dump the system.[624.54][624.54](laughing).
We can we can see it up here, but yeah, I'll just run through this real quick. Like I said, we talked about this.
Flush would be better.
I'm sorry?
Flushing it would be the more appropriate term.
Okay. Okay. So, we talked about two things, one being local limits and the other one being backflow. So, I'll briefly go through the local limits and what these are. When a business or industry comes to town and they discharge into our sanitary sewer, they have certain limits that they have to meet for pollutants that are in their waste product. And so, we had limits instituted about 20 years ago, but they weren't technically derived. And so, we had to go through and technically derive them. We've now updated them. And the numbers that you see up on your screen are the numbers that we ended up with. So, we've got the existing limits posted up there, along with what the proposed limits are. And please remember that those were derived technically, so they were they were done by an engineering firm based on what our wastewater treatment plant can handle, what we're discharging to the environment, what our residential citizens are discharging. And we take all that, and then we backtrack and calculate what the commercial or the industrial can actually discharge, primarily industrial, and not exceed any of those limits that have been developed. And so, those are up there on these two slides. I'll show you the next one in a second. Before I go to that one, I want to make one comment about chromium, total chromium, and chromium 6. In the in your packet, and also in the the information that you have in your regulations, those the two numbers for chromium and for total chromium and chromium 6 are actually reversed. So, what it says in there right now is that we're setting a limit of 3.0 for chromium for total chromium and reserved for chromium 6, and we need to reverse those two. We discovered after we were just looking this over this past week, we went all the way back to our engineering report, and we were kind of finalizing things. And it looks like that when the engineers did the report, and they finalized it all, there was a they had accidentally swapped the numbers in their report. And so, we had carried that all the way through until this point in time. So, when you make your motion to approve these, you will have to note that you're making it with the amendment for swapping those two numbers out, like I've just discussed. And then the remainder of the limits are shown up there. So, I don't know if you have any additional questions about local limits, because we did cover it in a lot of detail. If you do, I'll be happy to answer that. If not, I'll move on to the backflow prevention. Sounds like we're moving on.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, shall we take this first one, first motion?
You have to wait. It's going to be it's going to be adopting the whole set of town it's changing the whole town code, which covers both the local limits and the backflow and other changes to Chapter 9-05, 05, 05A, and 05B. So, I'll get through all this first. The other thing that we're changing on on the wastewater is the upper limit for our our pH, which currently is at 9.5 units, and we're bumping that up to 11. We don't believe there's going to be any problems associated with that. Okay, so getting into backflow prevention. Backflow prevention is on the domestic side, the domestic water system. And essentially, backflow prevention, as I discussed before, is preventing water from flowing backwards into our system from, you know, once we've delivered it to our customers. And so, this applies pretty directly to commercial and industrial, where we've provided water to them, and something happens to change the pressure in our system and cause water to reverse flow and come back from the customer into our system. And that water, at that point in time, we we had no control over it, so we don't know what could have happened to it. So, we need to really prevent that from occurring. And and so, we require commercial and industrial to have backflow devices on their water service right after the water meter. And so, just kind of talking through quickly what this is. For domestic water service, all commercial users will have what we call a reduced pressure backflow device, an RP device, that will be installed at the water meter in a hotbox. But this does not apply to single-family residential. And then, on fire sprinkler systems, we have a number of different types of fire sprinkler systems. We have residential systems where they use potable water piping. Those do not require a backflow device. All there is there is a single check valve in where the meter is located for residential. But then, commercial systems, classes 1 and 2, require a double-check prevention device, and classes 3 through 6 require a reduced potential device, because there is more potential for contamination in those types of systems. And we did, again, we did talk in a lot of detail about what those were last month.
Mine's working.
As I mentioned with residential, most of those don't have antifreeze in those systems. They're connected on the customer side of the water meter, and they have potable water piping. And so, with those, we don't require the backflow devices. The only times you would see those required by the fire department are in residences larger than 5,000 square feet in size, or in homes that might have changed occupancy, like to a care-type facility. And then, one additional change is that we do allow RP devices to go in the fire riser room of commercial if they're less than 150 feet away from the property line where we're where our service responsibility ends. So, if they're if they're farther away than that, they have to go at the property line. If they're closer than that, they can actually go in the fire riser room. And I think that pretty well summarizes what we talked about. This table just shows what you would what you're going to see in the actual regulations is how that's all defined. So, I guess I would take any questions you have at this time.
Questions, anyone?
No. Not any questions.
Thank you.
Got it. I'm good. I'm good.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I could just mention.
Yes.
Carol and Stephen spent quite a bit of time working with Neil in order to make these revisions. And so, I want to just recognize them. They did a lot of work, a lot of the heavy lifting, especially Carol, in terms of preparing the documents. And so, we have three actions to take tonight. The first thing is always, in order to make it so that Diane doesn't scream and yell at me about costs, the first thing we do is we've taken all of these amendments, and we've put them into a separate document that we adopt by reference. And so, the first thing we have to do is adopt or approve a resolution that declares that separate document to be a public record. So, that's your first vote. That's a one-time vote for a resolution. The next vote would be then the first reading of the ordinance that adopts that document by reference. And so, if you choose, then of course, you you declare you you vote in favor of reading it twice, and then we have Diane read it for the first time. The last thing we do is another resolution. And oh, this is a painful one for me. Years ago, when we had a separate water company, and so, we had a town system and a and a separate water system, we had some regulations that had to mirror all of the town regulations in reference to that separate entity. And so, we had all of these provisions that are in our town code in a separate resolution for the water district. Then what happened was we got rid of the water district, and we ended up combining all of those all of those rules into one big resolution. And after a while, people said, "Why do we still have that there?" And and I thought, "Well, it's there. We spent a lot of time. Why don't we just keep it?" And folks just don't want to do things like that. They like efficiency, for some reason, especially engineers. So, they sat down and said, "Why don't we just get rid of all of those separate regulations which are included all in the town code?" And Carol spent a lot of time going through, making sure we wouldn't lose anything if we did that. And she made a determination that we could do that. So, that third vote will be to actually repeal by resolution all of those earlier regulations that are now just covered in the in the town code. So, those are our three actions, and I invite you to go forward. When you do that, because Neil has identified that we have a typographical error in that big document dealing with the the limits for chromium, if you would just indicate that when you adopt these, you'll have to do that when we when we first adopt all those ordinance, all those amendments as a single document, you'll have to indicate that you're doing that with the amendments that were proposed by Neil. And then, the second time, when we adopt it, you'll have to say we're adopting it with those amendments that were proposed by Neil. Okay? Any questions?
Questions, anyone? Should I wait to A and or B, I should say? C, C?
Thank you.
I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Good luck. Yeah.
I'll make a motion authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1960, adopting by reference amendments to Town Code Articles 905, 905A, 905B to utility regulations for water and wastewater service with the amendments proposed by Neil by electronic vote and voice vote.
Second, anyone? Is it okay, Evan?
I'll second if it'll let me. It won't let me.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. You set the vote, Diane?
Yes, I will, Mayor.
You can do it.
Now they all work.
Counselmember Grossman, how do you wish to vote?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Mayor?
Well, mine is... I pushed yes on there.
Yes, Mayor, I have your vote as a positive. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, the vote is unanimous?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move on then to D, and it's consideration of approving the first reading of Number 815, approving proposed amendments to Town Codes 905, 905A, and 905B as amended to utility regulations for water and wastewater service by title only on two separate occasions. Anyone care to make a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 815, approving proposed amendments to the Town Code Articles 9-05 and 9-05A, and 9-05B to utility regulations for water wastewater service by title only on two separate occasions, and then place the same on the final package, or passage, I should say. Do I need to include the local limits?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay. I need to include the the identifying the chromium total and chromium 6 to reverse those, as Neil had alluded to, as an amendment.
And a second, anyone?
I'll second, Mayor.
Give the motion in a second. Would you set the vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Not yours, doesn't work?
Okay, that passes. Thank you.
That's unanimous, Mayor?
We'll move on then to E. I'm sorry. First of all, read Ordinance Number 815 by title only for the first reading, Diane.
Ordinance Number 815, an ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled Amendments to Article 9-05, 9-05A, and 9-05B of the Town Code, declared by Resolution Number 1960 to be a public record, to update the town's local limits for wastewater discharges and its backflow requirements for domestic water and fire protection systems, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected, but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Okay, we go on to Number E. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution 1961, repealing the separate town utility regulations. Anyone care to make a motion there?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to authorize a mayor in his absence of vice mayor to sign Resolution 1961, repealing the separate town utility regulations.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
You have a motion in a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
Yes, Mayor?
E.
Okay.
Okay, I got it.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Mayor?
That's unanimous. Thank you, Diane. Okay, we move on to Number F. Consideration of approving the purchase for sewer inspection van conversion by quality vans and specialty vehicles under state contract ADS PO16102779 in the amount of $23,399.74. Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't take up too much of your time with this, but I thought maybe I'd just show you a couple of slides just to show you what's really going on. And and just so you guys are aware, we had to change the name of this item, because we were originally going to call it a conversion of a camera van, but we were told that camera van had a negative connotation, and that might get confused with something else, like a traffic camera van. So, anyways, we've changed it so that you now know it is a sewer inspection van conversion that we're doing. And so, up on the screen is a photograph of our existing van. It's very old, and you can see some of the equipment in here, and I've got a better picture. It's looking in the side on one side, in the back, and it's very tight and cramped, plus it's old and worn out. And so, what we're proposing to do is to take a van that we purchased last year, a box truck essentially, and we are going to have it converted, which is for the price that you're seeing in here of $23,399.74, which goes through the state contract. And basically, if you go down to, like, all the larger municipalities, they have fleets of these things, and this is basically how they have them set up, so that they've got room for the person behind the or sitting at the computer desk with the the control equipment on the on the left-hand side is set up like an office, but it's dark in there, so you can see the camera. You can see the computer. So, one guy sits there, the the camera, the reel, and then workbench and other equipment goes in the back, along with whatever tools and things that they might need when they're doing the work. So, that's kind of how that is going to happen. And like I said, it's quick, so I'll take any questions you might have.
Questions, anyone? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, this is in our budget?
It is. Yes, we had we actually had $20,000 budgeted, and so, we've got a few extra dollars in one of the other categories. So, we're, I think it's part of the, well, actually, I think it's rolled up in the same item. So, yeah, it's a little bit more than we had budgeted, but we've got the money for it.
Any other questions? Laura?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve the purchase of the sewer inspection van conversion by quality vans and specialty vehicles under state contract ADS PO1610227 in the amount of
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you. Go to work with that, Neil. Okay, we move on to G. Consideration of approving an agreement with Granite Basin Engineering Incorporated to provide professional design and construction administration services in the amount of $20,000 for the 2016 PRV Rehab Project CIP Number W386. Neil?
Yes, thank you. So I was already doing two other presentations. I figured I'd round it out and just do three of them, so, you know, make. Yeah, so what you have in your packet is a contract for professional services with Granite Basin Engineering for $20,000 for designing improvements to some of our pressure-reducing stations which are associated with our potable water system. And again, just to quickly show you what this is, this map shows five different PRV locations that we're going to rehab. This is what one might look like if you drive by it. You don't know what it is, but there are vaults in the ground. And so inside, this is one of the old ones that we're redoing. You can see it's pretty messed up in there. There's no floor on this box. There's dirt everywhere, and those valves are really old, so we're going to go back in and make them a lot nicer, put newer valves in so that they work and function for us for another 20 to 30 years. This one's in a little bit better shape, but needs a couple of minor tweaks and a couple of additional features to it. And this is what one might normally look like with a concrete floor, newer valves, and so forth. So anyways, that's it. I'll just show that to you.
Okay. Questions or comments, or motions, or promotions?
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
Do we have any other facilities that need to be upgraded like this, or would this finish that up?
This will take care of most of it. We, I think the budget in there that we've got is about $174,000. What we're doing, one of the stations we're actually, which is older, and you can't even work in it, it doesn't have all the features that we need, we're actually looking at moving it about 200 feet north of its present location. And so that's part of the cost with Granite Basin Engineering to identify easements and such, do the design work on that one, and then going back and just improving some of those older ones. But typically, we go along and we do minor improvements and repairs to them as we need to. But this, we've just got a whole bunch of them that we want with it, you know, it's a little bit more involved than that, and we just want to get them done. They are the older PRV stations that we had, that we inherited when we purchased the Shamrock Water System back in 1999. So we just, you know, we want to update them and make sure that they're going to function for us.
I'm pleased that we're doing that.
Any other questions? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, we have five sites that you've identified to refurbish?
Yes.
Right. And I assume they're, what's the average age of those, do you think?
Probably 30 years old.
30? Okay.
Overdue. Laura says, any other questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve an agreement with Granite Basin Engineering Incorporated to provide professional design and construction administration services in the amount of $20,000 for the 2016 PRV Rehab Project CIP Number W386 by electronic vote and voice vote.
I'll second the motion. And first, motion made in a second. Would you set the vote? Diane?
Yes, Mayor.
See?
No.
Councilmember Nye?
It's a definite yes.
And Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Mayor.
Neil, go for it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we go on to G. Consideration, I'm sorry, H. Consideration of approving the budget transfer to the contingency funds in the amount of $17,700 to police criminal investigations operating in capital budgets for criminal investigation, computer, forensics, training, and equipment. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I don't have a video to show you that you couldn't see anyhow, so I'm just going to stand here and talk to you.
Okay.
I come before you tonight to ask for authorization for a transfer from contingency funds in the amount of $17,700. The money will be used to purchase forensic computer, software, hardware, and provide training for a detective in order to use the equipment. As we all know, today's technology age is very difficult to track crimes and to get information and evidence out of things like computers and cell phones. This computer, software, and hardware, plus the training, will enable our detectives to get that kind of information out. Currently, we can get it done through the state police or the Department of Public Safety, but it's about a year and a half turnaround by the time we submit it until we get it back, and that doesn't do service to our victims of our crimes in this community. And I'll ask or answer any questions.
I assume so, anyone? Mike?
Yeah, just interested, it sounds like the detectives will be taking the training for the.
Yeah, and it's very extensive training. They only offer it a couple of times a year. It's very, we have to have the smart people go.
Yeah. So how many would that be?
We're going to start with one, Philip Machinsky, one of our detectives who's got the abilities to get that kind of training and do really good at it.
Mary?
So by doing this, this will really be able for you to expedite the information that you're needing to get.
Absolutely. You know, nowadays, we see this kind of information, or the need to extract this kind of information in all kinds of cases, primarily identity theft cases, child pornography and other child crimes that involve computers, drug offenses, where we need to download information from people's cell phones in a timely fashion so we can act on it, and usually waiting a year and a half renders that information kind of useless.
Good. Yeah, that's quite a long time. A lot happens in that amount of time.
It does. Thank you. Laura?
When I was studying my packet, I was appalled at the wait time. I always knew there was a wait time. I had no idea it was that long. And normally, I get worried about us taking money out of our contingency fund. This is a time that it's the absolute right thing to do. And the lit, that you just read off of the crimes, that this will expedite, it is reason enough for us to all vote for this.
Thank you. Good. Any other questions, comments? Our contingency fund is there for a reason, so.
Mayor.
Mary?
You know, it's ironic that we would be sitting here doing this tonight, because today, on a personal level, I received a letter from the IRS wanting to know about my filing, and then I had filed my taxes. Well, I'm here to tell you I haven't filed my taxes yet. I'm working on them right now. So it turns out someone else is trying to file my taxes for me.
It's a very, unfortunately, those types of crimes are becoming very, very prevalent. Scams, all those kinds of things that people get involved in. And this kind of, this equipment will help us act on that much, much more quickly, and bring a better service not only to our entire community, but specifically to the victims of crimes.
Yeah, so I, it's just very ironic that we would be doing this today.
Therefore, you want to make the motion?
I will, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfer from the contingency fund in the amount of $17,700 to police criminal investigations operating in capital budgets by electronic vote.
And I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. We have the motion made in a second. Would you set the vote?
No.
Diane?
No. The IRS thought there was.
Councilmember Nye?
I'd say yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief, go for it. Okay, we go on to I. Consideration of approving a budget transfer from the contingency funds in the amount of $5,000 to a police administration capital account for an IA Pro professional standard software.
Thank you.
Chief?
Again, Mayor, members of council, I come before you to ask for authorization to make a transfer out of contingency. And this time, the amount is $5,000, and it's to buy computer software. It's called IA Pro, and what it is, is it's a tracking software, so we can track incidents of either unintentional or intentional misconduct within the police department to identify potential problem employees or other problems before they become newsworthy. So we all hate that. And so what happens is, in our agency right now, and especially since the agency's growing, and we have, I don't even know how many supervisors we have, 15 or 16 different supervisors, you can have somebody working for you one day, and they could do something, and you could make a note of it in your own personal notes, but then, six months from now, they could be working for their second sergeant or supervisor, and they may not know of the incidents that have happened. And so this kind of software will track it, so no matter where they go in the department, no matter who they work for, if an incident happens, when the supervisor goes to enter it in, it'll populate, and they'll say, oh, wait a minute, this person's had four or five different incidents, we need to send him back to the driving track before he kills somebody, or whatever the case may be. And so it's a tracking, it's a predictive software, so we can try to circumvent problems before they arise.
With Diane. Laura?
Do you have a question, Mike?
I do. Oh, Mike had a question?
I was just curious, again, the supervisors, this will be a tool for them, then. So they'll be required to annotate those incidences that occur, and then that'll be available to you and as the other supervisors, I assume.
Yes. I'll give you a good example. We had an officer recently, at the end of 2015, who was actually on probation for some misconduct that was, really exposed the town of Prescott Valley to a lot of liability. It was regarding his driving. And so he had been on probation for this for a period of time. He was involved in another incident that was fairly egregious. And at that point, one of the supervisors who he was working for at the time wasn't aware of this other, the fact that he was on probation, and knew vaguely about the incident, the prior incidents. And so he simply counseled him, until we found out about it and said, whoa, wait a minute, he's actually on probation for the very same thing. And it ended up in a termination. We ended up having to terminate the employee. Nobody likes to do that, but to save the town from exposure to liability, it was something that had to be done. With this kind of a software, that initial supervisor wouldn't make that mistake. He will see it, and he'll say, okay, there's a different course that has to go here.
Other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
A motion to approve the budget transfer from the contingency funds in the amount of $5,000 to the police administration capital account for an IA Pro professional standard software by electronic and voice vote.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion and a second. Would you set the vote? Diane?
Councilmember Nye?
It's another yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next is consideration and discussion of general unscheduled public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Anyone from the public care to comment? If not, we'll move on to the last item, which I know everyone hates. We need a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote? Diane?
Yes, Mayor.
See? [inaudible]. Yeah, we're still over here. It's October 29. Mayor Skook, thank you. Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Mayor.
Okay, great. We're going to recess for a little bit here, and then we go into a special meeting for the facilities districts.